Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. Let the record reflect, it's August 22nd, 7:00 PM. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Principal Mark Watson of Roosevelt McGrath. Mark?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands my nation, united at the universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Great job. Our next item, roll call attendance, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Here.
Ms. May, Mr. Albert.
I'm here.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Lille.
Here.
Ms. Heinz.
And I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, President Cox. Good evening, Board, community. It's with great honor today that we're honoring Dr. Mike Palladino. Served the district for forty-eight years. Incredible gentleman for everybody that's here, and I know they know that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hallman, who's going to say a few words, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Palladino.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Can I ask Pauline and John to come up here and join me? President Cox and members of the Board of Education, tonight it is my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Mike Palladino and his family. Mike, will you wave to your adoring fans? Mike knows how to draw a crowd. His colleagues and I are here today to honor Dr. Palladino and his daughter Lisa Lizak for their exceptional service to the students and staff at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School and Wayne Westland Community Schools. I'm joined at the podium today by John Plank and Pauline Fick. John will take a few minutes to let you know more about Dr. Palladino, and Pauline will detail a few of the many highlights of Mrs. Lizak's teaching career. John? Floor is yours.
Beautiful board and visitors. Dr. Michael Palladino, he grew up in Garden City, and has always said consistently, Wayne Westland feels like home. Mike, student taught at Stevenson in 1973. Timothy Dyer was superintendent then, and the board office was on Michigan Avenue west of Wayne Road. Mike became a sixth-grade teacher at Tinkham the following year in 1974. He organized and went to all the sixth-grade camps. As a fundraiser, he brought pumpkins from a local farmer and sold, or resold them to students in front of the school to fund the sixth-grade camp. They stored them in the school over the weekend, which was warm. And they returned to mushy pumpkins, and the place stunk to high heaven. Mike says, "I had more energy than brains back then." And in his ever-gracious and negotiating style, he visited the farmer, who ultimately donated replacement pumpkins free of charge. In 1977, Mike left the country to teach social studies to seventh, eighth, ninth graders at the, at the Sweden International School of Stockholm. When he returned in 1978, he taught math and English at Marshall. In 1982, he taught special education at Kettering Elementary, then a three-four split at Monroe Elementary. He returned to special education over the next few years at Adams Middle School and Wayne Memorial High School. Towards the late eighties, Mike became a permanent fixture at Roosevelt McGrath briefly as an assistant principal. However, the majority of his time from the late eighties to 2022 were dedicated to teaching special education and serving as the special education department head at the school. This past spring, after forty-eight years, as you heard, with Wayne Westland Schools, Mike retired for real. A few of the many highlights from that nearly half-century, forty-eight years and a half-century, include inspiring four, at least four, of his former Wayne Westland students to also become teachers in the Wayne Westland District, hosting student teachers in his classroom, writing mini-grants, specifically sensory room grants, tutoring students outside of school for ten to twelve years, winning a RISA Award for Creative Curriculum in Special Education and coaching girls' basketball and boys' track at Marshall, which turns out to be pretty interesting. Apparently, while at Marshall, Stevenson had a cocky coach. And Dr. Palladino took a point of pride sharing with me that he went undefeated in both girls' basketball and boys' track, including games and meets against Stevenson. Mike says his wife Debbie was very supportive and a great mother as he journeyed into and through public education. He spent seven years completing a doctorate in educational leadership and supervision at Wayne State. Additionally, he earned an educational specialist and school administration degree at Eastern Michigan, a master's degree in educational curriculum from Eastern Michigan, and a bachelor's in social work and social science from Eastern Michigan University. At Roosevelt McGrath as an assistant principal and teacher, Mike raised his family. His children included his youngest daughter Jill, son Kevin, the middle child, and Lisa, his oldest daughter. He encouraged Lisa to teach, and she did indeed become a teacher at Roosevelt McGrath, working along with all the building staff, including Dad, Mike. From Dyer to Dignan, and all superintendents in between, Mike was not only focused on students, but staff and community as well, and we all very much appreciate that. In his own words, "He was always invested in collegial relationships." This man has the vocabulary. That just sounds too short, too sterile to me. I know from personal experience, he is always willing and available with an open mind, an open ear, an open heart, and open arms to talk about anything and everything and possible solutions. In 1992, there was a Gatorade campaign and commercial, Be Like Mike. I guess I'm getting old. That's all right. That featured the legendary, before LeBron James and stuff, NBA player Michael Jordan. And Michael Jordan won a combined total of fourteen Most Valuable Player awards and won six NBA championships. Winning isn't always championships. Michael Palladino is a legendary educator. He seeks for truth. He seeks the road to happiness, and what he ascertains, he gives to others. His impact could be captured with an MVP or championship win for education, but he is far too humble for such accolades, except when it comes to beating Stevenson in girls' basketball and boys' track undefeated. So, we're thrilled to acknowledge the great careers of Mike and his daughter Lisa by renaming the Roosevelt McGrath Library and Centrum after them. I believe Pauline Fick will be talking about his daughter Lisa next. To that regard, Mike, you never lost a game, you just ran out of time. And for the rest of us, Be Like Mike.
Thank you, John. Just a few minutes ago, I got a chance to talk with his wife Debbie, and she seemed shocked that Mike and I started in the district in the same year. And we did. 1974, I started in the district with Mike. I was a kindergartner. So, Pauline, could you come up and speak for a moment about your friend, Mike Palladino?
Good evening. I am honored to have the opportunity to speak about Mike Palladino and his daughter Lisa Lizak. My first time meeting Mike was at Marshall Junior High, when I had the opportunity to have him as my math, seventh-grade math teacher. So, I also had him, yeah. He made me believe that I was capable of doing great things. I loved having him as a teacher. It was devastating when I found out he'd be leaving Marshall to take a different job within the district. He knows the story. I cried for days and refused to go to school. Little did I know that sixteen years later, Mike would become a colleague and a dear friend. I also had the honor of working with his daughter Lisa. Very quickly, I saw that Lisa was like her father in the classroom. Sorry, fast, tired of time. I saw that it was like her father in the classroom. The love she had for her students was present every day. She touched the lives of so many children. Lisa had a great love for children's literature. I wanted to share this with her students. She had the most amazing class library, and it was a huge point of pride for her. He made sure that the library had rich text with diverse voices and had it organized by genre in bright and vibrant colors. To get the students excited about reading, Lisa would dress up as characters of her favorite book. The kids would be so excited each day to come to class to see what character she was going to be for the day. And I have to admit, I used to run down to her class every day to see myself. She also had amazing parties to go with the themes that she was teaching, and a friend of hers told me that her mother used to love and help her go get these things with her. She spent many hours after school planning, engaging activities for her students and was very proud of her hard work. Lisa made learning fun and exciting, but most importantly, she made the kids in her class feel loved. She was always positive, and even on her worst day, she always had a smile on her face. After school one day, Lisa shared with me that she did not know if she could have children because of her cancer treatment. My daughter was adopted, and I immediately said, "Oh, my gosh, you should adopt." She stopped me and said that she did not feel a need to adopt, that each year, God blessed her with twenty-four new kids. Lisa truly thought of each of her students as one of her own children. Lisa also touched the lives of the staff members who had the opportunity to work with her. You could not help being drawn to her positive energy. When you were around her, you wanted to be a better person and a better teacher. The year Lisa lost her battle of cancer happened to be one of the toughest years I had in my teaching career. When I heard of Lisa's passing, it made me remember her positivity and her love for teaching. It also made me realize that I needed to change my attitude in the classroom. My negative energy was making my job harder, and my thought was, if Lisa could stay positive while fighting cancer, I could also stay positive each day. At her funeral, we were given a small card with her picture on it, and Mike told me the day that it was her wedding picture. I put that card on my sun visor in my car. Each day on my way to work, I touched the card and sent a little trip to Lisa, asking her to help me be a better teacher and a more positive teacher. It's been in my car for years. Mike also gave me pictures of Lisa to hang in my classroom, so when I'm having a tough day, I look up with those pictures and know to just keep going and keep being positive. My hope is that the teachers at Roosevelt McGrath will share with the students why the library is named in Lisa's honor and share her great joy of teaching and her love for children's literature. Teaching was Lisa's passion and what gave her life purpose and meaning. I know she was looking down on the students at Roosevelt McGrath, smiling as the children gain a love for reading and literature in our libraries. Thank you. And Mike, you and your daughter will always hold a special spot in your heart.
Thank you, Pauline. Those are some very kind words about a dear friend. Tonight, it is my honor to formally announce that based on many years of service dedicated to Wayne Westland Community Schools, that this family has so generously given to both Roosevelt McGrath and Wayne Westland Community Schools, that the Centrum will be named the Dr. Mike Palladino Centrum, and the library will now be known as the Lisa Lizak Library. Mr. President, with your approval, I would like to read and extend these resolutions to Dr. Palladino and his family.
Please.
So, the first is a resolution of appreciation and acknowledgement for the service, dedication, and work of Dr. Mike Palladino. Whereas Dr. Mike Palladino has served the Wayne Westland Community Schools as a special education teacher for forty-eight years, and whereas his five decades of service has diligently focused on making a positive learning environment where each student has the opportunity to learn and grow, and whereas Dr. Palladino has provided special needs students with exceptional support and meaningful sensory experiences, and whereas Dr. Palladino has advocated for students to grow in an inclusive environment, and whereas Dr. Palladino obtained multiple grants for educational programs and improvements, and whereas Dr. Palladino assisted in providing more mental health support services to Wayne Westland Community Schools, and whereas Dr. Palladino has been an exemplary mentor to many fellow educators and supported them both professionally and personally. Now, therefore, be it resolved and known to all that the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools hereby dedicates the Roosevelt McGrath Centrum, and that it be hereafter known as the Dr. Mike Palladino Centrum. Passed and adopted by the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools, Westland, Michigan, on this twenty-second day of August 2022. And that's signed by Dr. President Cox, Dr. Dignan, and Dr. Dill. Congratulations. Before we invite Dr. Palladino to come up and say a few brief words, I did want to read the second resolution. Resolution of appreciation and acknowledgement of the service and dedication of the work of Lisa Lizak. Whereas Lisa served Wayne Westland Community Schools as an incredible second-grade teacher for three unforgettable years, and whereas Lisa provided teaching style that was both fun and engaging for her students, and whereas Lisa was especially passionate about reading and would often dress in character to bring the books to life for the children, and whereas Lisa became ill with cancer, her students were fortunate because her desire for teaching gave her the strength to continue teaching while she received treatments, and unfortunately, her body eventually succumbed to cancer, and she was taken from the world far too soon. Whereas Lisa's career as an educator may have ended too quickly, however, her beautiful spirit and passion for teaching live on as an inspiration to fellow educators. Now, therefore, be it resolved and known to all, the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools hereby dedicates the Roosevelt McGrath Library, that it be hereafter known as the Lisa Lizak Library. Passed and adopted on this day and signed by President Cox. Could you come up and take these? What were your thoughts? It is now my pleasure to invite Dr. Palladino up to say a few brief words.
I'd have to laugh because you've heard the emphasis on brief. Charlie knows me all too well. So does my daughter Jill. I went on and on at her wedding with accolades. I've known Charlie for thirty years. Before I start, I just want to say I'm just filled with gratitude. Wayne Westland has been home to me for forty-eight years. I grew up in Garden City, right next door. I always felt so comfortable here. I loved working with administration. Most recently, my buddy Charlie from the last thirty years, Mr. Mark Watson, the last two, three years, Heather, just great people to work with, always so approachable, full of knowledge, always creating a great work environment for me and the teams. Wayne Westland has never been a job to me. I never looked at it that way. It's been a joy to be here, and perhaps that's why I've been around for forty-eight years and they couldn't get rid of me because I enjoyed it so much. I did get sent by the district, or, yeah, sent by the district, to go to Sweden, Stockholm, Sweden, and teach at the International School back in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight. I taught social studies there. And it was there that I learned about collegiality, because the tradition over in Sweden back then with my colleagues was, every morning, I would meet one or two people for coffee before work, and five or ten people after work, we'd all get together, I mean regularly. And we became friends, but it was also doing kind of, you know, the professional development before and after work. And it just became inspiring to me to hang out with highly intelligent people like I have with my friends here over the last forty-eight years. It's inspiring to talk to them, to troubleshoot, to talk about curriculum, challenges, solutions. And so, I just want to say I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunity to have worked in this district for close to fifty years, and always run into great people in Wayne Westland. I think it's a great district. I'm just going to be political here and say it's really wonderful how the Board and our superintendent, Dr. Dignan, have shepherded this over the last two, three years, the COVID and all the innovative programs that continue to be added all the time. I'm always impressed. I'd like to also reach out to my friends and family here and say thank you for supporting me so much in coming up with this idea and sending a petition to the Board to honor especially Lisa and to my family, my wife Debbie, my son Kevin, my daughter Jill, my grandchildren are all here tonight, and I appreciate their love and support. My career started out forty-eight years ago. I came in as a sixth-grade teacher. I was a social worker before that. I worked at Ipsy State Mental Hospital. And I had also served as a department head for twenty-eight years in special ed, assistant principal at McGrath. And so, over the years, after teaching twelve years in general education, I got into special education, and one of the things that really cleared my head was I had a conversation with the minister about the position. And he told me, he said, "Mike, when you're going into special education," he said, "You know what, Mike? We're all five minutes away from a wheelchair. A lot of people don't think of that, but we are." And he said, "There but for the grace of God go you or your children." And at that moment, I resolved to give all I had to the program. Now, when I came to the program in nineteen, roughly eighty-two, eighty-three, our students were deinstitutionalized in seventy-six. And when I came to the program, kids going to schools was new, and there weren't a lot of resources. And when I came to the program, I came from general ed, and I said to my teammates, I said, "Is this all there is?" And they said, "Yeah, at the moment, this is." So, we wrote rationale, and to the credit of the Board, we sought to do sensory integration. And the Board supported us tremendously way back when, roughly twenty-five years ago. And they gave us $25,000, and we set up a sensory room at McGrath and one at Tinkham. And I always knew that sensory integration was great for our students and helped focus their minds, helped get them actively involved, made them independent learners, and controlled behavior. And so, I'm a big advocate for sensory integration. And as Charlie would tell you, I have handed out packets to my fellow administrators with sensory rationale, year after year after year. And I just think it's an ongoing project we need to continue to work on, and we are, and Charlie has, and that's really good for our students. And it's kind of ironic that the sensory room, the Centrum, is being named after me because I've been an advocate for that for a long, long time. Now, I'd like to speak about Lisa. You know, I don't know how to sum up my daughter in a couple minutes, but I'm going to try. Lisa, as a child, used to write stories, and she was always filled with joy and wonderment. And she would kind of con her brother, her sister, and the local, her friends to be in her plays. She wrote these stories. She'd have them put on costumes. She had a little marquee laid out, and they would all act out the plays. So, she had this sense of wonderment about her. And when she came to teaching, she brought that with her, and she became very inspiring. But as Kelly Clarkson would tell you, you know, "What doesn't kill you makes you stronger." And you've probably all heard that people that do suffer cancer, especially metastatic cancer, it does make them stronger. It does transition them and give them superpowers in some way. And Lisa became fully animated with joy and passion. In fact, her mother reminded me tonight that Lisa once said that the only place she felt normal was in the classroom. She battled ocular melanoma for six years. She lost her eye to it originally, then it traveled to the liver. Lisa would, as, I'm trying to think here, as it was said earlier by Pauline, Lisa would dress up in costume, and she would bring that energy for her plays, her books, her kitty litter, to the classroom. She purchased with her own money over two thousand kitty litter books. She spent an entire summer leveling those books so she could bring them into her classroom. And in 2012, we lost Lisa after a very courageous battle. She got up every day and went to work. She did that, wanting to collect her students at all. She wrote curriculum, elementary curriculum with That's Right and other teachers that was here in the district. And once Lisa passed in 2012, we had a educational provider named Amber Parks. I don't know if you may remember her. She brought us thinking maps about fifteen years ago, and she was a great educator. And she formed her own company called Writing by Design. Well, Amber reached out to me six months, three years after Lisa passed, and she was friends with Lisa. She knew what Lisa did. She had been in her classroom. She said, "Mike, I was so inspired by Lisa's teachings, her creativity, her passion in literature and writing." She said, "I want to form the Lisa's Legacy for Literature Award." And so, she developed a program, and she sought candidates to be nominated for that, and she gives out a $500 award each year for the last eleven years. And my lovely friend here, Jen McConnell, was our first recipient of that award. Anyhow, to kind of sum up Lisa's life and importance, if I can even begin to do that, she once said, "Dad, the only way I make it through is I remember to stay calm and move forward." And she said, "Dad, I know you're going to do my eulogy." And I said, "Yes, I will. What would you like it to say?" No, because I could go on and on about it. You know that already, but I'm going to sum it up here in a minute. And so, Lisa said, "Dad, I want you to use a quote from Dr. Seuss." And I said, "What would that quote be that you want me to use in your eulogy?" And she said, "Dad, tell everyone not to cry because it's over, but to smile because it happened." And that was part of her eulogy, and now her legacy lives on, thanks to all of you and you and you. It's very fitting that the library would be named after Lisa because she loved literature and writing and reading. And so, once more for posterity, thank all of you for the honor that you bestowed upon Lisa and myself. Thank you to the Board, the community at large, my friends, my family. Thank you to all my colleagues who enriched my life with collegiality. Collegiality, I'm sorry. And I'm so grateful to know each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
He tried to take the rest of my speech, so I think that means I should wrap it up. Thanks, Mike. Celebration's going to be planned in the fall at the school so that the students can join in thanking the Palladino family for all their dedication. I'd just like to thank Crystal Cholino for really getting things started. Nice job, Crystal, and her team for bringing this wonderful idea to fruition. Appreciation to John and Pauline for speaking so passionately this evening. Nice job, my friends. And as well, sending my gratitude to the Board for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallman.
Before I jump to the next one, I just want to say again, Dr. Palladino, thank you very much for your commitment to the profession, but most importantly, our children. And just a side note, U of M Trails wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Dr. Palladino and the other doctor, his daughter Jill, so thank you very much. Moving on the agenda, we have the K-12 Sex Education. Kate Bro and Adrian Ethan are going to get up and begin.
Good evening, President Cox, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Dignan, the Wayne Westland- the Wayne Westland team, and all of the community and families. Please allow me the opportunity to publicly thank the Sex Education Advisory Committee for their hard work during this process. I would also like to thank the community members and other stakeholders that provided comments at our two public hearings. Today, with the legislative requirements complete, we, the Secondary Sex Education Advisory Committee, recommend the Health Smart Curriculum Lessons Five, Six, and Seven to fulfill the state mandated HIV and sex education content requirements for middle school instruction, and the Michigan Model for Health Curriculum Lessons Five, Six, Eight, and Fourteen to satisfy the high school HIV and sex education requirements. Each of these seven lessons meet, but do not extend, pass the content of the Michigan Compiled Law related to sex education and reproductive health, thusly providing students with bias-free and medically accurate content to all of the students of Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you.
Similarly, the elementary curriculum for sex education that was presented to you back in June after we had our two mandated public hearings is recommended, as was presented in June, that you all had a review. Do you have questions for us, or anything else you want to know about?
None, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, the MASB Certified Board Member and Merit Award. I'd like to take a minute to recognize two board members, one Kimberly May, the other John Albrecht, for the recognition they received from the Michigan Association of School Boards. Mr. Albrecht and Ms. May both received the Certified Board Member Award from the MASB for exceeding their course requirements to become a certified board member. Ms. May also received an award of merit for the completion of Certification Level One and a minimum of forty-five educational credits from the MASB. Congratulations.[736.13][736.13][applause] Make sure I'm still agile. I'm gonna come out here. So, I can present a strategic plan summary. We took a lot of state input from stakeholders, and what we wanted to do is identify and ask, kind of access our strengths, gauge values and perceptions within the community, and provide an opportunity for input. So, again, we held a lot of public forums in order to do this. And again, in the virtual world, at times, it was pretty hard, so a lot of it was done virtually. We looked at district and school demographic data, as well as the strategic planning team was formed to take a primary role in developing the plan itself. Again, it was held, we had different stakeholder meetings on September twenty-first, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, as well as October nineteenth. We tried to do it at different schedules so people could try to make our meetings and we could get input. Our goal areas were broken down into academics, communications, facilities and operations, and personnel, human resources. Again, this would be a five-year plan, and it would start this year. One of the things that we wanted to do around academics was prepare all students for post-secondary experience and promote college and career readiness at all grade levels. We broke it up between grades kindergarten through six to focus on career awareness, grade seventh and eighth, career exploration, and then nine, twelve, career preparation. And the reason behind that is we want our kids to get out in the community and experience different careers, whether if they want to move on to skilled trade or go to a four-year university, if they're gonna have that option, a little bit better idea of what they want to do. One of the things, strategies that we're gonna put in place this year with our college and career readiness teams is that kids fill out two college applications, as well as the FASSA during the Michigan College Access Month, which is in October. We also are creating college access teams at each high school, both Wayne Memorial and John Glenn. And again, we want our buildings to develop a clear, ongoing communication about not only college, but career readiness. The second goal is Wayne Westland Community Schools will cultivate a collaborative culture through the development of high-performing teams. One of these teams are gonna be resetting and relaunching our professional learning communities. It'll both help to strengthen the vertical and horizontal alignment of our curriculum instruction and assessment. Staff will align their instruction to district curriculum and pacing guides. Staff will increase their understanding of using high leverage, research-based instructional practices within their classrooms, and then develop a professional development system that includes opportunities for all staff. Another one is the MTSS, which is known as Multi-Tierred System of Support. Our focus this year is Tier One instruction. The reason being is it sets the foundation of MTSS. MTSS really now is a three-legged stool. So, one is the academics side, which is Tier One instruction, which is general classroom instruction. PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support, does the behavior. And now, SEL or mental health is the third leg of the stool. For our MTSS in the classroom, we want to focus on data for decision-making, evidence-based curriculum instruction and smart materials, and get our teachers and kind of our PLCs in a continuous improvement process where we're sharing and collaborating best practice around Tier One instruction. This is a cone of MTSS. The top one is Tier One, the middle one's Tier Two, and Tier Three is the bottom one. One of the things that we plan to do, again, is to focus on Tier One instruction, which should encompass about eighty-five percent of our students. The next thing is communication. We want to attract, we will attract and engage the school community through consistent and meaningful communication using a multifaceted platform. We really want to communicate not only with our internal stakeholders, meaning our staff and support staff, we need to improve that area, but also with our community. We need to have ongoing community, communication to get our community involved in what we're doing. We plan to do this by enhancing the internal communication protocols that value transparency and staff input, strengthen opportunities for parent and community engagement and feedback, and then developing marketing strategies to attract and retain students and staff. We have gotten involved in digital conquesting. And what that is, is we start to target people within the boundaries of our school district and right on the periphery, on their websites. When you get online, it'll have something that communicates the great things that are happening here at Wayne Westland. Another thing, facilities operations. We want to continue to review, analyze, and adopt resources for efficient alignment to meet student and community needs. As you go around our district, we're completing facility projects on time and within the budget. And in a lot of cases, with the rising prices, ESSRs really help to complement finishing a lot of our projects. Enhance curbside appeal for buildings, including Wayne Westland Community branding, review facility utilization, and implement strategies for the best efficiency that we can. Next one is strategically recruit and retain quality staff with intentionality, offering meaningful career development. I was with President Cox today at our new teacher orientation, and Ms. Bro did a great job emceeing it. It was standing room only. There were not enough seats. They had to go get more seats because of the staff we had there. One of the things that we made a focus was lowering the class sizes in our elementary schools. And again, I think that's gonna attract a lot of families and stuff to our district. Again, we want to cultivate opportunities for career development for all of our staff and build capacity within Wayne Westland Community Schools, and we plan to do that over the next few years. Last thing is some of the things that we believe. First and foremost, we're here because of our kids. Students are our number-one priority. Everyone should be treated with dignity and respect through equity. We want to look at everything we do through the lens of equity. We are here to serve and to collaborate within the community. We value the ongoing growth and development of schools and families. And again, we want to empower our kids and staff to be innovative, because that is gonna change us. And if we give people and empower them a chance to grow, they're always gonna surprise us. The last thing is our commitment to processes and data will inform our decision-making across the district. Any questions? First of all, anybody's glasses?
I'd like to make a statement. Yes, I'd like to thank all the staff and students for your hard work of negotiating all of our union contracts, because a lot of times, the beginning of the year is the scariest, when a lot of teachers retire. You worry about empty classrooms. So, I'm so excited to hear that it was standing room only. So, I'll give you guys a round of applause for taking care of that and making sure all our staff and students are happy. So, thank you so much for that work.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz.
Other questions regarding the strategic plan?
Two of them are sitting right there. Peggy Powers and Julie Rogers have been burning the candle last few months.[1282.01][1282.01][applause] Any other questions?
Ms. May?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. I'm gonna go backwards first. My first question is about the Strategic Plan of Security. On the MTSS triangle for Tier Two under, I believe it was Behavior, the initial CICO, what is that?
Say that again?
The initial CICO under Tier Two for Behavior on the chart.
Check-in, check-out. Yeah, it's just abbreviation. Again, that document's going to change during the course of the year. Is PLCs across the district are meeting. They're gonna update their, we call them the MTSS cones. Buildings will update them. And again, they'll build them not only around the academic end, but Behavior and then SEL or mental health.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wasn't, I could not figure out what I was supposed to say. Sorry. The next question I have is just, how is this to see this triangle connected to the continuing of the program?
Because here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna align our school building, school improvement plans to the district improvement plan, which will provide the fuel for our strategic plan. So, again, really, the three goals around the strategic plan are gonna be based around attendance. They're gonna be based around MTSS and PLCs. And so, that's gonna kind of drive our plan to start off, and we'll just build on. The last one's the college and career readiness.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, my last question, and I, is just, will there be check-in dates or board presentations just kind of bringing up our speed on where we are at times of our progress? So, some things where, you know, we're doing as well, or some things we need to make some adjustments. Will we get that information?
Absolutely. I think it's, we talk about transparency. The only way you can get transparency is by quarterly reports. And you have to be honest. Like, hey, we're hitting this. We're hitting a home run here. You know, we're struggling right here, and we need to improve and get better. So, getting in that continuous process, we have to be honest of where we're at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other members of the board? Hey, Doctor?
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening are citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting reserved for citizens who wish to address the board on items which appear on the agenda this evening. I haven't received any documents to show that anyone wants to address the board. Does anyone wish to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. One-one-six point two-three is your motion on consent.
Don't move.
Moved by Ms. Heinz, support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Heinz.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, President Cox?
And I vote yes.
Let the record show motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, one-one-seven point two-three.
Mr. Neal, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Neal, thank you. Motion passes. Sorry.
One-one-seven point two-three, Board of Education Committee reports finance committee met. Ms. May?
Thank you. Good evening. Finance committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at four-thirty PM via Zoom platform. Mrs. Royal presented K-5 curriculum materials as part of the acceleration support plan. A variety of funding sources will be used to support the purchases. Mr. Wenzel shared technology purchases to support the implementation of esports and the CAD program at Career Tech. Grants will be used to support both of these purchases. Mrs. Cleese shared with the committee that she will be presenting the recommendation for the purchase of rose salt this evening. She also reviewed both the investment report and the monthly check register. Mr. Tocco shared district's updates on behalf of Dr. Dignan. Board members expressed feelings of gratitude towards the staff. The meeting was adjourned at four-fifty-two T M.
Thank you, Ms. May. It says here that a resolution, but we do not need a resolution to approve receiving the report. Number two, Policy Committee report. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. Policy Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at six P M. The meeting was called to order by Dr. Weaver at five-fifty-five P M. Present were Mr. Cox, Mr. Albrecht, Dr. Dignan, myself, and absent was Melody Heinz. Dr. Weaver welcomed everyone and turned the meeting over to Dr. Dignan. The committee read and discussed the changes suggested by Miller Johnson, which reflected the latest changes in the law. Dr. Dignan pointed out that once we have made the switch to NEOLUP for the board policy and administrative regulations, the policies should be continuously updated. Each policy will have a revised date, and the board policies will be linked with the appropriate administrative regulation. It was suggested that Dr. Dignan take the lead on getting the board policy and administrative regulations set up with NEOLUP. The meeting was adjourned at six-thirty-nine P M.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you for those reports, Ms. May and Dr. Weaver. One-one-eight point two-three is review and approval of business service and finance items. Ms. Cleese, it's nice to see you. You're up the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a recommendation to purchase rose salt. I am requesting board approval to purchase a planned quantity of seven hundred tons of rose salt from Detroit Salt Company. The district would not be ordering early field salt for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and the district will reserve seven hundred tons of salt. The salt will be funded through the Maintenance and Operations Department General Fund Budget.
Your motion? Mr. Albrecht, support, aye. Mr. Neal, discussion? Roll call vote, please. Was that Dr. Weaver's?
Yes, that was me.
Well, we'll give you one on a gift card.
Mr. Neal?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Next up is the recommendation to purchase pre-K through fifth-grade curriculum. I am requesting board approval to purchase the new pre-K through fifth-grade curriculum. The total cost for this curriculum will not exceed one million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, thirty-three dollars and two cents, and will be charged to both the general fund and grant fund.
Your motion? Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support by Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Next up is the recommendation to purchase career technical technology. I am requesting board approval to purchase a quantity of twenty-five Dell Precision Tower computers and dual monitors to support the CAD programs at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. Pricing for this purchase was achieved by utilizing consortium pricing and will not exceed forty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. If approved, this If approved, this purchase will be charged to the Career Technical Equipment Grant and will include three years of warranty and support.
Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Neil?
Support.
Support by Ms. Heinz. Discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Heinz.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May? Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next up is the recommendation to purchase computers to support esports. I am requesting board approval to purchase a quantity of up to 25 HP computers to support the esports program. Pricing for this purchase was achieved by utilizing consortium pricing and will not exceed $46,063. If approved, this purchase will be charged to grant funding and will include five years of warranty and support.
Is there a motion? Move. By Dr. Weaver, support by Ms. Heinz. Discussion? Ms. Heinz, roll call vote.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cleese. The next item on our agenda, 119.23 is a review and approval of human resource items. Mr. Toco?
Yes, as we begin the 2022-23 school year, I am pleased to announce the following administrators that join our team in no particular order. And I first of all want to thank Phil Rossing for giving me the opportunity to give some pronunciations of her name. Amanda Rosskey joins us as Assistant Principal of Wayne Memorial. Ms. Rosskey has a Bachelor of Science degree in Elementary Science Arts Group from Eastern Michigan University and Master of Arts degree in Educational Leadership from Eastern Michigan University. She spent her career in Ypsilanti Public Schools as a high school and elementary school teacher, department head of student support services, and most recently as an Assistant Principal Supervisor of Student Support Services. We welcome Amanda Ross.
Let's vote on it first.
Yeah.
Is there a motion? Move. Moved by Mr. Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Says unanimous. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here. I'm just excited to be part of the Zebra family and happy to be here.
We're happy to have you. Congratulations.
The second administrator I'm going to speak about is David Raft, who comes to us as Executive Director of 912 Curriculum Instruction. Mr. Raft has a Bachelor of Science and degree in Business Education from Eastern Michigan University, a Master's of Science Degree in Educational Leadership from Eastern Michigan University, and a Master's of Arts Degree in Educational Technology from Michigan State University. Mr. Raft has spent his career at Saline Areas High Schools as a teacher, athletic director, elementary principal, middle school principal, and high school principal. He most recently was the principal of operations at Saline Area Schools. Welcome Mr. Raft to the team.
Is there, is there a motion? Yes. Mr. Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Heinz.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
President Cox?
And I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Raft?
Good evening. Thank you, President Cox and the members of the Board of Education. I'm very excited to be part of the Wayne Westland Community School District. Look forward to my time here, and we have good things going. I'm excited about it. Thank you.
It was nice to meet you on Saturday and welcome. Wish you great success. Mr. Toco?
Next is Dr. Alex O'Feely. As we welcome him as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Dr. O'Feely has a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Education from the University of Michigan, a Master of Arts Degree in K-12 Administration from Eastern Michigan University, a Specialist of Arts Degree in K-12 Administration from Eastern Michigan University, and a Doctor of Philosophy Degree from Eastern Michigan University. Dr. O'Feely has also completed his Art of Leadership Institute at Harvard University Graduate School of Education and the Certified Human Resources Specialist Program with Michigan State University. He was most recently an elementary principal in Novi Community Schools. And we will welcome him after the vote.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, was that you, Mr. Neil? Dr. Weaver, support by Ms. Heinz. Is there discussion? I'd just like to say he brought a beautiful family with him. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
You're in, Doc.
I would like to start off by thanking the board for your vote of confidence. I want you to forgive the commotion that was going on back there. My kids were really excited. It's been a long time, a long conversation that's been going on in our household about the next step that I was going to make professionally, and this was the right decision. I have had the opportunity to talk to community members, to talk to the leadership with Wayne Westland, and the common thing that continues to come up is this is a family. I'm happy to be a part of this family. I'm really excited about the future. I'm really excited about the vision that Dr. Dignan has for the community and the school district at large, and I'm confident that we're going to make this community very proud with the work that we're going to do as a leadership team.
Thank you, Doctor. We're so lucky to have you.
Next, Kim Polakovic. Ms. Polakovic has a Bachelor of Science Degree from Central Michigan University in Secondary Education and an English Business Education and English Business Education, a Master's Degree of Education in the Principalship from Saginaw Valley State, and an Education Specialist Degree in Curriculum Director from Saginaw Valley State. She has worked as a High School Assistant Principal, Director of Academic Services, and most recently as the Superintendent of Fitzgerald Public Schools. We welcome Kim after the vote.
Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support by Ms. Heinz. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Heinz.
Ms. Heinz, that's a yes. Fellow Cardinal. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
President Cox?
And I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Welcome.
President Cox and the board, I'd just like to thank you. It was a tough decision. I spent my whole career at Fitzgerald Public Schools, but after being here for a week, I definitely know I made the right decision. It has been an amazing experience, so welcoming, and I'm very excited to dig in and get some processes going with our state and federal programs and get to work with all of you and our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're happy to have you. Welcome.
Last but not least, Nancy Rizitzky.
Schultz.
Just recently, Schultz. Nancy comes to us, is coming to us in the position of Director of School Improvement and Professional Development. Ms. Rizitzky has a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Elementary Education, History, and Geography from Michigan State University and a Master's of Education in Curriculum and Teaching from Michigan State University. She was a classroom teacher, reading interventionist, principal, and curriculum supervisor in Southfield Public Schools. Most recently, a virtual teacher for the Wayne Westland Community Schools Virtual Program.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support. Ms. May? Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Heinz.
Ms. May? Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo? I'm sorry, Dr. Weaver, sorry.
Yes.
And Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Board and Administration, for this opportunity. I can't express how excited I am to be here. The welcome has been outstandingly gracious and supportive. You have a strong community here. As witnessed on Saturday at the Back to School Fair, your administration, teachers, building-level administrators have all been extremely supportive in these first few weeks. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to building upon the great things that we have going on already.
We're lucky to have you. Thank you for coming. I've noticed that University of Michigan, Harvard sits over there, but Eastern Michigan and Michigan State sits over here. I don't know. I don't know why that happens, I believe. Corey Gildersleeve, Principal Wayne Memorials, in the audience. Hello, Mr. Gildersleeve. 120.23 is review and approval of board policy revision updates. So move. Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support. Support by Ms. Heinz. Is there discussion on policy revisions? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Seven zero. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 122.23, which is the designation of delegates to the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. We're going to need four delegates. All members of the board can attend. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One, thank you, Vice President Albrecht. 121.23 is staff recognition and appreciation, of all things, I forget.
Yeah.
Dr. Dignan?
Yeah. It's all that the board proved the dates listed to recognize individual employment groups for the important contributions they made during the 2022-23 school year.
So move. Motion by Albrecht, support by Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Ms. Heinz?
All right, we have Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz? Yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Can I do the MAS P presentation?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. 122.23 is the designation of members of the board to the Michigan Association School Boards. Is there a motion on the four delegates? Mr. Albrecht?
I would like to nominate four people who I believe will accept the nomination. Mr. Buckaloo, behind. Kimberly May and Dr. Weaver.
Are the members of the board in agreement?
Yes.
Congratulations on your newest honor. Let's reflect that other members of the board will be alternates in case those first four can't make it. Congratulations. Next item on our agenda is 123.23, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Dignan?
Thanks, President Cox. I was at the transportation kickoff this past week, and it was the most impressive transportation presentation I've ever seen. So I just wanted to point that out. I'd like to thank Chad Kondrick, Jeannie Downs, and Tara Drian for their leadership and hard work. But most importantly, I want to thank our bus drivers. Our kids start and end their day with our bus drivers, so we appreciate what they do. I also want to thank our custodian and operations for all their hard work over the summer preparing our buildings. It's no easy task, especially with all the bond work. They've been burning the candle on both ends. I just want them to know how much we appreciate them. They truly are the backbone of our district. As everyone is deep in preparation for a phenomenal 2022-23 school year, I just want to take the time to thank our building administrators, central office, staff, and secretaries for their leadership. Their leadership and work ethic make our district go. Want to thank Jenny Johnson, our planning team, for spearheading behind the efforts at the Back to School Fair. We had over 3,000 people that showed up. It was a huge success, and again, the numbers were incredible. I want to congratulate the people in the audience tonight that were hired. Wayne Westland Community Schools just got stronger across the board. Again, we're very excited of you being part of the family and again, looking forward to great things. I also want to welcome back our teachers and support staff. They're the heart of this district, and they're kind of the heart of our engine, so they make us go. They make all the magic happen for our kids, and they cement the climate and culture of our buildings. They'll be coming back at different times this week, so we're really excited. Congratulations to Stevenson Middle School, which has been officially selected to participate in the MAS P Esports Club Pilot Program this year. And then I also want to thank the Communications Department, Scott Mastonbrook, for overhauling our website. If you haven't seen it this summer, Scott's done a tremendous job getting it ready, cleaning it up. We're going to update picks each week, so that's exciting. First time we've ever done this. We actually have live videos now on our website, and I credit Scott for taking a chance to get that done. Please look at our hubs, because again, we have information for every department. Last thing is, I want to welcome back our students and families. The beginning of the school year is always exciting. To see our kids come back to class, participate, and interacting is what makes this educational thing go. We're very lucky here at Wayne Westland. It truly is, and I heard the common theme, we are a family. And again, if family's going to come together, we will rise to any challenge together. And I wish everyone a great start to the school year. I'll end it on that.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. This next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Citizens who wish to address the board on non-agenda items can do so now, which means this is an opportunity for you to address the board on anything at all. Anyone wish to come to the lecture? Seeing none, we'll move to the review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. May?
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I would like to first just take the opportunity again to acknowledge Dr. Palladino and his daughter, Lisa. Just such a touching way to begin our board meeting tonight, and I just, my heart goes out to them, and I'm so grateful that they were a part of our district. I'd also just like to acknowledge our Back to School Fair. I had the opportunity to stop by on Saturday, and it was just phenomenal. The kids were so excited. I mean, I thought I was excited pulling up, but then I saw the kids, and they were like, just over the top. And I just think it was such an awesome way for us to kick off the school year, especially after the last two years, right? So it's just, you know, I'm going to knock on wood and just say, it felt so close to normal, right? And I'm saying close to normal just because, you know, fingers crossed, knock, all this stuff, right? But it just, it felt really good to have the kids out and to see them so excited and to see the families excited. And I just have to commend the staff and their hot pink shirts. They were awesome and just super friendly and welcoming. And it was just, it just felt really, really good. So very nice job. The next piece is, Mr. Toco, you spoke briefly during the Finance Committee meeting about the new teacher orientation. And so you were very excited about it because the teachers were going to have an opportunity to go on a tour. So to hear that talked about somewhat this evening, just coupled on top of what you talked about, your excitement for it. And so it is so nice to know that we had the opportunity to welcome our teachers into our district and welcome them in such a professional, in such a professional way, right? To welcome them in and make them feel like they're a part of the family immediately. So thank you all for your work with that. I also would like to welcome our new house. It was very nice to walk in the room tonight and see so many smiling faces, new faces to our team, and to hear each of you speak in regards to what you're excited about bringing to our district. And so thank you for wanting to be a part of our district. And finally, I'd just like to welcome all of our students, our families, our teachers, our staff members back. I am excited for this school year. Again, I feel like it is as close to normal as we've been in a very long time, and I'm just so excited for what that's going to look like and the progress that we're going to make. Having the opportunity to see some of the new curriculum purchases that are taking place and knowing what's going to be in front of kids this school year is just so exciting and amazing. And I'm just excited to continue to get updates and hear about how we're growing and how our kids are just rising to the top. And so I'm looking forward to a very phenomenal school year.
Thank you, Ms. May. Mr. Buckaloo, isn't that what you were going to say?
Exactly. I don't see you having to be looking at my notes.
Mr. Buck?
So, Mr. Albrecht and Ms. May were given certificates of accomplishment, achievement through MAS P training. And I'm a strong believer in MAS P and also in that training, so I commend them on that level of training. And it brings to mind the policies and the bylaws that the Policy Committee worked on and delivered to us today. One huge section of those forty pages deals with Title IX. And Title IX is dealt with in the training in MAS P. It's something we on the Board need to be aware of, not necessarily experts in, but aware of. We certainly have an obligation to treat all of our students fairly, to make sure that discrimination, whether it be racial or sexual or any sort, not happen. But if it does happen, to deal with it in an appropriate manner and in a quickly, not let it sit. Because the danger to the students is clearly obvious, but the problems for the school district are very real, and we need to be on top of that. MAS P helps keep us aware of that sort of thing, and of course, the real experts have to be our employees charged with that sort of responsibility. We recognize two individuals tonight, Ms. Lezak and Dr. Palladino. I never had the opportunity to meet Ms. Lezak. I did meet Dr. Palladino last fall when he was given a grant through the Wayne Westland Foundation. Outstanding educator and just a wonderful person to be around. So, I think that recognition is well-deserved. It says something about Dr. Palladino. It says something about our school district as well. If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Palladino is the longest-tenured teacher in the history of this school district. And that, again, is a unique accomplishment on his part. And congratulations to him and his service, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. He says he wants to come back and help out if the opportunity presents itself. And I'm sure it will, and I'm sure he'll be glad to do that. Our students are returning to class on Monday. I'm excited. I have a grandson who's beginning the journey through John Glenn High School. But that's a personal thing. So, I had the opportunity to stop by the school fair on Saturday. It was amazing. Unfortunately, I was a little slow finding a place to park, and I was told to move it, and I did. I won't say who said that, but when she speaks, I listen. It was at the athletic field at John Glenn High School, and there was something there for the little kids. They had a little train running around the track, and they had a climbing wall for those that were maybe a bit more adventuresome. I got in line for the train. Hot dogs and pop. There were a number of tables set up where clubs and organizations were taking names, explaining what they did to our students, to their parents. And I couldn't help but think that we were dealing with the strategic plan at that time. Goals four and five deal with reaching out to the community and making that communication, making them feel a part of it, and also, curb appeal, making sure people see just what a fantastic facility and facilities we offer to the community. If people attending that fair or hearing about that fair don't get excited about coming to Wayne Westland, I don't know what will excite them. It was an excellent event, and I'm glad that I had an opportunity to stop by and see a little bit of it. Dr. Dignan, I know you were quick to give credit to all of those people that did the work. I'm sure that the impetus for the whole thing was yours, just as the strategic plan is. We hired five new people, and I welcome each of you to our school district. I know that you're going to make a positive contribution to our school district. I also strongly feel that down the road, you're going to look back on the decision to come here, and you're going to realize it was a fantastic career move on your part. We have so much going on. You only need to look at the two people we recognized at the beginning of our meeting today to see what a fantastic family Wayne Westland is. But if that isn't enough for you, the strategic plan, the fair, the introduction of new staff to the district, all of those things make this a super place to be. I can't imagine this school district half as good as Wayne Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo, and you look ridiculous in that train. Mr. Neal?
Yes. Well, my colleagues have done a fabulous job presenting their comments. I would only like to add my welcome to our new hires, and thank you all very much for choosing our district.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back to our students this year, and I'm sure that they're going to excel and not have any problems and move forward. That's always the pleasure of starting brand new. Welcome to Dr. O'Feely, Kimberly and Nancy. I won't even try your last name, but it's good to have you. Is this Mr. Gilders? Okay, I haven't met you yet. I would just say to you and Ms. Rossy, be careful of that five-foot-four-inch woman over in counseling. She's not as sweet as I am, so, you know, be careful of her, if you would. Also had a great thing for inner staff memos. It could be, "What's up my sleeve?" Huh? You think? Okay, good. All right. That concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, President Cox. Special thank you to Dr. Palladino and to Lisa for their contributions to our school district. Clearly, the recognition was deserved. Thank you, Dr. Dignan, for your summary of the strategic plan. I can only imagine the hundreds of pages of narrative, the spreadsheets, the data that drove the decisions to choose those particular goal areas and the strategies. And I know that we will be interested on a routine basis to hear how we're doing. Congrats to all of our new administrative employees. I'm really glad you're here. I'm going to go a little further and say glad all of our new teachers and our support staff are here. I know one of the bus drivers personally. Glad she's taken a role here. Mr. Holman, you started in nineteen seventy-four. You're still not done?
Not done yet.
And then thank you to Mr. Watson for his brilliant leadership in our pledge of allegiance today.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. For my comments this evening, I'd just like to say that... Did you have something to say?
Yes. So, I'd like to thank and congratulate all the new staff. Welcome to our Wayne Westland family. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Palma, I don't want to pronounce you wrong, Palma? Palladimo, and then Mrs. Lezak. I think that was amazing to have that recognition, especially people who really served their life for the district, so it was very touching. I'm pretty excited. So, I'm actually hosting, this is open to all Wayne Westland families. It's going to be an Innovation, Technology, Skill Trades, Job Fair. It's going to be sponsored by the City of Inkster, Inkster Chamber of Commerce, and Alina Hicks Public Library, but it's open to all families in Wayne Westland. We're going to have the Carpenter Mill Ride. We're going to have DTE, Pipe Fitter, Bricklayers, and they're actually excited to come out because, you know, I really definitely want to push the skill trades. And we have, Dr. Dignan had introduced me to the MAIT School, so they are fired up. I'll come out to this district, and I'm going to do more with skill trades, having that, you know, being part of the community. But we're going to have free resume building, career coach, job placement, light refreshments. And along with this career fair, definitely I'm going to work really tight with our district. I got this from School Craft College, and it's actually a free tuition program. It's a grant that they have for robotics, free classes, like three credit hours. So, anything we can do in our district to like promote information about, you know, different trainings and free credits and college credits for families and students in the district, so I'm going to send this over to you all. So, I definitely want to like help us out with that, because, Dr. Dignan, you did an amazing job over the spring with that career fair that you had over at William D. Ford. So, I definitely want to push William D. Ford to our communities, to different areas, to let them know, "Look, we have these amazing resources in Wayne Westland." And, oh, so the skilled job trade fair, I'm sorry, it's going to be Wednesday, September the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from eleven to four P.M. at the Alina Hicks Public Library, two-five-zero-zero Hammond Drive, Inkster, Michigan, and I'm going to get it out. So, you know, everybody in the community can participate, because, you know, these jobs are paying like twenty-one dollars an hour, good benefits, you know, no student debt. So, this is really amazing to help the parents, you know, and the students in the district to help us, you know, move forward. So, thank you so much for everything you guys have done. I hate that I missed the Back to School Fair. I was in Lansing over the weekend representing Wayne Westland as a delegate with the governor, so I'm definitely making sure we bring some resources back home to our school district, and you guys have done an amazing job with the grants, because, I mean, without these grants, it's really helping us move forward in our district. And congratulations to all the new staff members.
Well, you sure did have something to say. I'd like to say, you know, I could talk about all the wonderful things going on in the district, but honestly, where do you stop? There's just so much. But what I've really been struck by and humbled by is as we were introduced to our, by the way, congratulations, I was so happy to have you, but as we were introduced to these people and Mr. Toko read their educational background and, look at the preparation that these people have had to do in their life. It's just the years of preparation, and we're the benefactors of it, frankly. They're here now to share that with us, so it's humbling. You've done all that work, and we're so happy to have you doing it here. And it's also humbling, you know, this strategic plan, this is not a small document. And if you read it, you will see the plan, everything we're going to be doing, the money that we're going to be spending, the decisions that we're going to be making, is following this plan. And having a plan means that you know where you're going to end up. So, I'm very happy to get it. I'm frankly amazed at the work that comes out of your office. It's very impressive, and I appreciate it. Welcome back to school, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Ms. Hines? Support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.